For those of you who have not been in the country or somewhere under a rock, Julia Ratty, our councilwoman from Ward One, has been appointed to the Nevada State Senate. So she's had to resign unfortunately from our body and she will be representing Sparks at the legislature in the special session. So we will miss her, of course. She did a great job for us, so just wanted to let you all know that. Okay, next is the invocation speaker, and I think I have Elder Mackey Cray of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, is that correct? Come on down, sir. Welcome. Is this your first time?
Yes.
Welcome. There's only two million people watching, so don't get nervous, okay?
My Father and Heaven, we give thee thanks for the responsibility for which we have been given. We ask thee at this time that thy Spirit might reside in this meeting, that thou will guide the City Council to do that which is right and best for thy children that live within the Sparks City limits. Father in Heaven, we ask a blessing upon the city of Sparks, that they might be able to nourish and to prosper. We are grateful for Jesus Christ. We ask that we might follow his example, help us to do that. We love thee, we love this city of Sparks, and we pray for these things and give thee thanks, in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Elder. That was very good. Would you all please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Hiding, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is public comment. If you'd like to speak under public comment, and if you fill out one of these cards, please, you'll have three minutes to talk. First, we have anonymous. Welcome.
2013 created a perfect storm for the city of Sparks. 2013, as you know, was a Nevada Supreme Court ruling that the city of Sparks Council is culpable in funding matters when they're funding criminal activity in the courts. 2013 also saw the change in legislation, NRS 41.0338, in which local councils were under the counsel of the Attorney General for the state of Nevada. That included this council here. And 2013, finally, the trifecta of the perfect storm was the leadership summit that was put on by the Nevada Supreme Court. This occurs annually. Judges and justices throughout the state are required to have CEUs. These are continuing education units that are granted by the administrative offices of the courts. This is the agency that is run by the Nevada Supreme Court. This agency puts on seminars, and a seminar was put on by the President of the District Court Judges Association. His name is Thomas Arthur Ritchie Jr. He was a chief judge out of the Eighth Judicial District. The reason he put on the seminar is because he was intimately involved in cases, over 50 cases, that were occurring in the Eighth Judicial District Court. And these cases were all about evidence of battered children being destroyed in ongoing cases. This was a police report by the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, and two court employees confessed in that police report. The seminar material that Thomas Arthur Ritchie Jr. introduced in that continuing education seminar, nine pages of it, was an intra-court memo. Yes, judges and justices talk amongst themselves without our knowing it. If we have a court case, it's very likely that our case could be discussed among judges and justices without our knowledge. The intra-court memo was a nine-page court memo about how to keep the children's cases out of the courtroom. And ex parte, which your attorney knows what this means, this is a legal instrument that can be used to keep these children quiet, keep them out of the courtroom, and this is what the leadership summit seminar was all about. They used a case called Jordan v. State of Nevada, and all of the proceedings are occurring ex parte, so these children never have a chance to get before a judge. And all of the abuse evidence that's been destroyed by the courts, as confessed in the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, is never before the court. So we're just keeping you, I don't know what my time is, the screen's running out, I'm sure it's ending.
Time's up.
So to conclude, we just want to keep you apprised of our legal causes of action before you. I am, again, speaking anonymously, due to the retaliation we survivors of domestic violence are suffering. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else under public comment? Okay, moving on. Approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order, or looking for a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is the consideration possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council workshop on September 19, 2016, and the regular Sparks City Council meeting of September 26, 2016. Any omissions, deletions, or corrections? If not, looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee, to approve the minutes of the September 19 meeting and the September 16 meeting. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Passes unanimously. Okay, moving right along to proclamations. This announcement's from the stage. Proclamation, International Walk to School Day. Somebody here to accept this?
Yes.
Come on down, dear. You look familiar, you're ever here, right?
Yes.
Do we do this three or four times a year?
Yes.
I think it's like seven times a year. All right, I'll go ahead and read this, and then you can give us a little spiel, please.
Thank you.
Whereas school travel by private family vehicle for students grades K through 12 accounted for 10 to 14 percent of our automobile trips made during the morning peak period in the past 2 to 3 percent of the total annual trips made by family vehicles in the United States. And whereas reducing the number of vehicles driving students to school results in increased safety, reduced traffic congestion, improved air quality, and less fuel consumption in the vicinity of schools. And whereas the benefits related to physical activity at an early age play a leading role in reducing rates of heart disease, diabetes, and other obesity-related health problems among young children. Whereas children walking and bicycling to school together with parents and caregivers opens opportunities to mentor children about pedestrian and bicycle safety, and its benefits related to health and the environment. And whereas walking and bicycling to school offers an opportunity to build physical activity into both parents' and children's daily routine. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 12, 2016, as International Walk to School Day in Sparks and encourage citizens of Sparks, Nevada, to walk or bicycle with their children to school while celebrating the benefits of increased safety and health, this day and throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Martini and council members. I am Officer MJ Cloud, and I'm the Safe Routes to School Coordinator for the Washtau County School District. I'm also a police officer with the school police. This is a wonderful event, and we look forward to it every year. We want our students to learn about health and safety, and this offers a prime opportunity for us to demonstrate ways in which they can stay healthy and be safe while they're walking to and from school. Walking and bicycling to school is a great way to spend some time outdoors and get some exercise and reduce vehicle traffic around our schools. The Walk to School Day activities help raise awareness about walking and bike safety skills. They remind motorists to be diligent in watching for children who are walking and biking in the neighborhoods. And now is when I'll go off script just a little bit. Last month, my son was hit in a crosswalk, and he was on his way to school, and he's okay. He's absolutely fine. He had a slightly bruised spleen, but he's back to his sports. And the part that was most concerning was he did not tell anyone. So he was on his way walking within our Sparks neighborhood, and even all throughout the school day, he didn't tell a teacher, he didn't tell anyone at all. And he was hit dead center, crosswalk, by a moving truck. He told his coach at football that night because his side and ribs were hurting. And when I asked him later, he said, "I didn't want you to make a big deal, Mom." Okay, well, I'll try not to do that, but, yeah, 13 years old. I do believe that a lot of children are doing this, because oftentimes when, as police, we go to a home after school and something has happened at school, the child doesn't tell anyone, and it just happens to come out, and then the parent will call us, and we have to then investigate what's going on. As a police officer, I think a child's first reaction is they're the ones in trouble. And in this case, it was hard for me to convince him, "You weren't in trouble, and I'm not making a big deal out of it." And it makes me wonder how many other students and children are getting into accidents that aren't being reported. It just brings us right back to this walking and how important it is. So this Wednesday, when we have thousands of students that are around our schools and walking to school with their parents and the staff and the communities, it's all fun, and we bring incentives like pencils and stickers and fun things to let the kids get those memories, correlating safety with a great memory. But it's up to events like this that is a way for us to caution motorists and make sure our community knows the critical need to be careful driving, not in just the school zones, but all over the community. And the lives of our children really depend on us, and the International Walk to School Day offers us a great opportunity to remind everyone to watch out for the pedestrians and the bicyclists when they're behind the wheel. So I appreciate you guys' support in this event.
Sure. Thanks for being here today, we appreciate it. And then we have some more questions, but, you know, it's amazing how quick a little kid can get out in front of you and never even see him. And if you're not paying attention or going slow, you're gonna run right over him. Please pay attention when you're out there. Mr. Smith?
Thanks for coming in today, MJ. Did the driver report anything?
The driver kept going. My son said that he gave him a thumbs up, and...
Wrong finger.
The driver, he said the driver looked at him and lifted his chin, and my son gave him another thumbs up, and then kept walking. So the driver drove on.
The reason I asked that question, I got a call today from a kid, was from, I think, grandparents, or maybe just an acquaintance, a kid got hit on Alta Vista the other day by a car, and they kept going. So my question to everybody in the audience, when we were growing up, did our parents say, "If you get in a car accident or hit somebody, just go, drive away, don't stick around"? I don't know what the world's come to, so it's, I'm glad you're out there.
I agree.
Ms. Bybee?
Thank you for being here today. I would also echo what Councilman Smith is saying. The number one complaint I get, now that the weeds are starting to go away, or we've gotten a lot of the weeds, really, really, the number one complaint I get is speeding, and speeding everywhere. And every constituent that contacts me, I say, "It's not just your neighborhood, it's not just your street, it's not just the roadway on Vista that they're driving 90, it's up Los Altos, it's the side streets, it's near the schools." I don't have an answer. And I really, it's frustrating, because as the city, people blame us because we don't have a policeman on every single corner giving people tickets, but I think it's got to move beyond that. And I don't know what we can do as a community to increase awareness of getting people to slow down. People have got to slow down. We're all driving too fast. And I think, obviously, let alone, you know, hitting a child, I would really like to reach out to the community and to our residents, and every one of us, including myself, to check your speed, to really try to slow down, give yourself more time to get somewhere. Because it's not just an annoyance and a nuisance that we get complaints on, it's dangerous, and we wind up with accidents, and we wind up with a situation that most of us, I think, we could avoid. So I would hope that we, as a community, can look at some way to just get people to slow down and think about how they're driving, because you don't want it to be your kid next week, or you, and you don't certainly want to be in that situation. So it's frustrating, but I appreciate your efforts and what you do in the Safe Routes to School. Great event on Wednesday, and I also would echo, everybody slow down, especially this Wednesday.
Exactly.
Pretty close to my heart kind of deal here, because when I was in the fourth grade at Robert Mitchell, just down the street, I was a traffic cop, and I put my sign out, and some lady came barreling through and just hit this little girl. She went flipped up in the air, right on the gosh darn hood. Of course, I was an eyewitness, had to go to court, and it was just a tough experience for me, as I think back to that time. So please, slow down, don't hit a little kid, you'll regret it for the rest of your life, really. So, thanks MJ for all you do, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for having me.
You bet. Okay, consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item, eight, one through eight, three? Whoops, excuse me.
We still have two more proclamations.
No, I'm not trying to get by the proclamation too quick, am I?
Seven, two and seven, three.
Seven, two is a proclamation, I'm sorry, got a little carried away. Commendation for Nancy Satmary, is Nancy here? Come on down, come on down, Nancy, have a seat. I'm gonna read this, and then you can say a few words, please. Commendation, whereas Nancy Satmary is a resident of the city of Sparks and lives in the neighborhood near Wood Trail Park. And whereas on August 20th, Nancy organized 30 of her neighbors and members of the Coral Academy High School chapter of the National Honor Society to participate in the Park Beautification Day at Wood Trail Park. And whereas these volunteers trimmed trees and bushes, raked leaves and debris, and generally cleaned and improved the park and the appearance of the neighborhood. And whereas a community of strangers were brought together to accomplish this task, have gotten to know their neighbors and set an example to other neighbors in Sparks. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, join with the City Council in commending and thanking Nancy Satmary for her dedication to the beautification of her neighborhood and Sparks community. Thank you so much.
Well, I want to thank everyone here today, Mayor Martini and the council for this honor. It truly is nice to be recognized when you do something. Although, honestly, I can't say it was all me, I pulled it together, but it wouldn't have happened without all the other members of the community that participated. I do want to recognize my other half here today, Ken Dale, right here. He was a tremendous help every step of the way. We actually talked about it, we're walking around the park going, "This is getting worse, this is getting worse, we need to do something," and finally decided we needed to try and organize an event that would have, we needed help, we couldn't obviously do it all ourselves, so we pulled it together, and luckily, it turned out successfully. Had help from family members, and neighbors, and people in the community, and also, it was a surprise, we had the Coral Academy help us. And the way that they got involved, they're a charter school in Reno, high school, but I put a Facebook request out and just asked people to share it, and the advisor for their National Honor Society had saw it and asked the kids if they wanted to come help, and they sure did. They were a tremendous group of young people that really came and put a lot of effort in, and were a nice representation of young students. That was really gratifying. Our goal is to continue to keep the park up as we go forward, and in fact, we had a little event just yesterday. We had a small weed cleaning, because some weeds have cropped up again already since August. And I wanted to thank our councilman, Ron Smith, came yesterday and helped us out, and also from the city of Sparks, the Parks and Rec Director, Tracy Dominguez, came and helped us too. And it was really nice, they helped pull with weeds, they also stayed, we had a little potluck right after, they stayed for that, and talked with the people that were there. And I think everyone in the community really appreciated the chance to ask questions and give some feedback, and so it turned out to be a nice event. So anyway, I thank you from the whole community for this recognition, and we're gonna continue going forward, try to keep it going.
Thank you, Ned, we appreciate you. Now, with that, more of your... ...and stuff in the neighborhoods, we just never make it within today's things. And I know Ron's waiting to say a comment, but one thing, when Ron helped you out, did he know which end of the shovel to use?
He did very well, yes.
Okay, good. Go ahead, Ron. Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
No problem.
You know, Nancy kept this to herself, because anybody at the park yesterday didn't know you were getting this proclamation today, so I'm glad I said something to everybody. And, you know, the park is in great shape, and it's because of what you and your neighbors have done. And like Gina said, the volunteers in this, in the city, Sparks has a giving heart, so when they can get in and do that kind of thing, you know, the park looks great, and then Tracy was there, and I didn't even notice it was her, I was looking at her dog, which is about 10 feet tall. But it was a nice event, and you're a pretty good cook, too, here, Kendall, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you for stepping up and being part of the solution. We get a lot of complaints, and people wanting the city to fix everything, and we do the best we can, but obviously spread thin with everything that needs to happen in this city, and I love the fact that you stepped in, found a solution, and then got a team together to address a problem. And it was a win-win, because like you said, you met people you didn't know, and then people have an investment and a sense of pride in the kind of, in the work that you did, and the volunteer, you know, volunteering is something that makes everybody feel great, but the difference that you make, I think, is critically important to the city, and I'd love to see more of that maybe spread around the city to some other parks. And there's Adopt a Park, I guess I'll put a plug in for Adopt a Road and Adopt a Park, that people can do across the city, through Tracy and Parks and Rec, if they're interested in doing that, it is an opportunity that we need more of, and welcome. So thank you so much for your work.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay, next is presentation Pumpkin Palooza by Northern Nevada Center for Independent Living. Nice sweatshirt.
We didn't want to lose us.
They'll never see you coming, will they?
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us here today. My name's Lisa Boni, I'm the Executive Director for the Northern Nevada Center for Independent Living, and I'm here, number one, oh, it advanced already, I had a really nice slide that said, "Thank you." Wanted to thank the Tormark Group for having faith in us five years ago, when we came to them with a kind of a crazy idea to have this celebration. It, you know, it's hard to believe that five years later, we're standing tall, and we've gone from, we thought our successful event would be about 300 to 500 people, and we're expecting about 10,000 this year. So we're very grateful for the support, and we're very grateful to live in a city that has placed an emphasis on doing nice things for the folks that live here. So the next slide is, one of the things we're known for is, we are the state of Nevada's only pumpkin derby, and we are quite proud of that. No one else in the state has a pumpkin derby. We started our pumpkin derby, there's a local company, Proto Fab, you can see their picture right there, owned by Kurt Huntune, built us a custom ramp in year one, they believed in us too. And we were on our way, and what the derby does is, as you can see in these pictures, the kids come down, you can either build your car ahead of time, which you can tell the ones that did, that have kind of got a little smoother appearance, or we have our Pumpkin Patch Garage with our master mechanics down on Victorian Avenue the day of our event, and you can go down, you can work with a master mechanic, oh, this is going really fast, sorry, to make your car, and then you could race, and it's, sometimes, like I said, it's about speed, and then sometimes, come on, don't fail me now, it's about style. We get some pretty crazy cars these days, and a lot of work goes into them. I'm very proud to say that we are partnering this year with the Discovery Museum as well, and we are doing two workshops at the Discovery Museum on next Wednesday, the 19th, from 4 to 8, and then again on Saturday, from 10 to 5. Our master mechanics are going to be there, as well as Team Ruddy Court, which is a two-family team, that they have dominated the pumpkin derby for the last couple of years. So we ask the kids to come down to the Discovery Museum and kind of share some of their trade secrets, so other folks can learn how to build a really fast car. So what we're hoping, as the racing has really grown quite a bit, but in addition to the racing, we have all these other different events that attract the families, and people are coming down and pretty much spending the day with us now. We have a free activity stage, we use the amphitheater, thank you for getting it all clean, by the way, we really appreciate it, it's terrific. We have mummy wrapping contests in there, we have pumpkin seed spitting, pumpkin pie eating contests, and cup racing, which is hard to describe, but it's, the kids love it. And we have, the activity stage stays busy every 15 minutes all day long, so the kids can come in, they can sign up for all the different contests at no charge. The other thing that we are quite proud of is, oh, there's Zombo. Zombo is our official family costume parade emcee. But the other thing that we're proud of is we have all kinds of carnival games, and our carnival games are all unplugged, there's nothing electronic, they're all run by people. We recruit about 230 to 250 volunteers each year, a lot from the university, in fact, most of them. And then when people give us things, as you can see here, there's doors, somebody gave us some doors, we made a game. Home Depot gave me toilets, I made a game. The kids really like the toilet game, by the way. You know, so through working with our community, we've been able to take resources and make all sorts of carnival games that the kids can participate in, and they get to interact with people, instead of just looking at a screen. And then our costume parade started out as a kids' costume parade, but we found out that the adults really wanted to play too. So it's a family costume parade now, and we get, as you can see with the pirate family, they actually came, and their entry in the derby was a pirate ship, so they were completely themed out. And then we have all sorts of street entertainment, and all of this is free, the games are 50 cents a piece, we try to keep everything very affordable. But all of the street entertainment is free, the costume parade is free, the activity stage is free. The pumpkin derby is very nominal, it's $10 to race, and you get your pumpkin, and we let you, we borrow, you can, we loan you the wheels and axles, and then you give them back to us when you're done, so we can use them again next year. We have a pumpkin beauty shop, which is extremely popular. We probably decorate about 150 to 200 pumpkins in the course of the day, and the kids get to take them home, so that's pretty cool. We have a marshmallow shooter assembly lab that the STEM kids from the university staff for us, and Western Nevada Supply gives us all the PVC pipes, and you buy a little kit, and then you can put the kit together with the help of the students, and they actually explain the physics of why a marshmallow shooter works. Then my optometrist sponsors the accuracy range, the kids can go over and see how accurate they can be with their marshmallow shooters, and then, of course, they get to take their shooters home with them. And then we added vendors a couple of years ago, and this year, we have 57 vendors signed up to participate with us for the day. It is a one-day event, we're in and out on a Sunday. And then we also have, let's see, the latest is seven food trucks will be coming. And then we have one person who coordinates all of our live entertainment, we have live bands all day long, as well as zombie cheerleaders, and the time warp will be going on. So over the last few years, it's gotten to be multidisciplinary. And then we use the Glendale Schoolhouse, Washtau County School District's volunteer services will be in there this year doing storytelling and giving away books all day long, so that's kind of a fun thing, and it's amazing the number of people who live here who've never been in that. So like I said, last year, we used 235 volunteers, it gave us 1,100 hours just the day of our event. I have a staff of seven people, and it gets really crazy in our building during the month of October, in a good way. What we do, if you don't know, is Northern Nevada Center for Independent Living, we are all about having people live the independent life that they want within their community. We are sort of like the anti-nursing home people. We work really hard to help people identify what their goals are, how they can stay independent in their community and not be institutionalized, and how they can be givers and not just takers. So it's a very important role that we play here. We work with people with intellectual and developmental disabilities as well... We work with people with intellectual and developmental disabilities as well as physical disabilities. We have a small library of equipment that we lend out, and we also provide a lot of advocacy services. We help people with housing. We help get them, we're kind of like the hub in some ways, in that we don't always provide the service, but we know where to find the service. And so we can get people connected up with all the different kinds of organizations in our community that might be able to help them with any kinds of issues that they have, if they've had a change in their health condition, or if they have a family member who might need a little bit of extra help. What I'm hoping we can interest you in today is helping us spread the word. Any kind of publicity support is really welcome. I'm kind of nervous. I'm sorry.
You're doing fine.
I'm stuttering a bit. And then the other thing is, we're really hoping to get a City of Sparks Pumpkin Derby team this year. And I'm going to hand it off to my cohort here, Francine, who, by the way, the Parks and Rec folks are awesome to us. We just could not have done any of this without the Tourmark dollars and the support we've gotten from the city. And before I let Francine talk, I want you to know, we survey every year the folks who come to our event. We have four or five college students out all day long taking surveys. And one of the most common pieces of feedback that we get is how much the folks that come to our event appreciate the support that the city has given to this event, and that they're interested in having something that's a little bit more about the people who live here. So we are very grateful for that. Francine, take it away.
All right. I'm Francine Burge, for the record, Special Event Supervisor, City of Sparks. And I'm here with a challenge. As Lisa said, that she would like to see some more city teams. So at the last Pumpkinpalooza meeting, I went forward and I personally bought three sets of axles. I'm committed to a Parks and Rec Derby, which I will decorate, and I've got the wheels, accesses. Everything's ready to go right here for two more teams. For my challenge, to the city council, and to my friends in the audience, is to establish two more teams. And I just wish that somebody would find me after this meeting, and I will give them a set of accesses and show them how to build a Derby race.
Plenty of departments out there, I'm pretty sure. Community development, huge.
Huge.
City manager's office, not bad. Finance, finance department, huge.
Police, fire.
We've got all these engineers over here from community development. You guys going to step up or not, you guys and ladies? I think that's a yes.
I think I'm going to get an email by the time I get back to my.
Mayor Rundle just raised his hand. He's excited. I think the engineers in community development are ready to go, so. One more department, certainly human resources, a very, very, very large department, so.
So are we backing out, Councilor Mayor?
Go right ahead. If you want to be the captain, no problem.
If I've got some help from my cohorts here.
I'll be out of town.
I'll be there. I'll be there.
Well, that was the other thing we were going to ask you, if maybe you'd present the winning trophy again, because that was huge last year.
Well, you know, I would love to, and I will, if I'm still alive, I hope I am, I will be. But anyway, go down there and watch this thing. Just the pumpkin races themselves will crack you up. Those kids are serious, and as serious as a heart attack, I'm telling you. When they race, they yell and scream, a couple of kids crying.
No, those are the parents.
Yeah, that's right. It wasn't parents, was it? So come on down to Pumpkinpalooza. You will have a good time, believe me. It was a lot of fun. I enjoyed it, and I will be there again.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks. Appreciate it. Okay, how about consent items now, 8-1 through 8-3? Anybody want to pull a consent item? Not looking for motion.
Motion through consent item 8.13.3.
Have a second?
Second.
Motioned by, motioned by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve the consent items 8-1 through 8-3. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. General Business, 9.1, Presentation, Discussion, Possible Approval to Award a Contract AC 5292 to Corn Ferry Hay Group in the Amount of $90,000 for a Classification and Compensation Study. Go ahead, ladies.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and council members. I'm Andy Voss, Human Resources Manager, for the record.
Good afternoon. Jill Valdez, Human Resources Analyst, for the record. We are here today requesting approval for a contract to accomplish the goals of the classification and compensation study approved in the budget. The goal of this study is to reevaluate the city's job structure and pay bands to make sure that the classification and compensation system is properly aligned and that the process is transparent. Mayor and city council salaries are not subject to this review because they are established through municipal code. This is for full-time positions at the city. The study will result in salary structure recommendations. No changes to job titles or pay will happen without union and council approval. The last time a systematic evaluation of the class and comp system was undertaken was approximately the late 1990s. The proposal before you today is from Corn Ferry Hay Group. They have over 70 years of expertise in class and compensation. They are industry-recognized and highly regarded for delivering a well-designed class and comp product. There are a limited number of vendors with the expertise required for this project. The vendor recommended by staff has government experience, experience working in a union environment, Nevada experience, and local experience. Their model incorporates participation with stakeholders like employees, managers, unions, and council. For these reasons, staff feels they have the qualifications needed to help the city undertake this study. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions?
None? Okay, looking for motion? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we move to award the contract to Corn Ferry Hay Group in the amount of $90,000 as outlined by staff.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve Agenda Item Number 9.1, AC 5292. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, 9.2, Consideration and Possible Approval of a Parking Agreement, AC 50305307, ACSRA 315, between the City of Sparks, Redevelopment Agency of the City of Sparks, and Sayufi Enterprises. Go ahead, Armando.
Mayor Martini, Members of the City Council, I'm Armando Anelis, Assistant Community Services Director. Sayufi Enterprises, which owns the movie theater facility located at Victorian Square, has requested this parking agreement to secure continued free access to the parking structure adjacent to the theater owned by the, by the city. So Sayufi owns the movie theater facility, and the city owns the parking structure. In the 1990s, the city and redevelopment agencies entered into a development agreement with Sayufi Enterprises for development of the theater. That was actually formalized in a development agreement approved in 1996. And one of the terms of that agreement was that the city would, was responsible for providing 700 parking stalls in a structure available for the theater's use. That agreement, though, did not left open the possibility that parking could be, fee could be charged for parking. Sayufi has told city staff that continued free access to the parking structure for the theater is essential for them to secure a new operator, or alternatively, for them potentially to decide to operate the theater themselves. They, Sayufi Enterprises was the company that formerly owned the Century Theaters, brand of theaters, that they sold to Cinemark. The council and the redevelopment agency approved a similar parking agreement with Cinemark, which was the previous operator. But in August of 2015, that parking agreement never actually took effect because Cinemark failed to extend their lease on that building. So that was, you know, of course, a condition of the agreement with Cinemark, and because they never exercised their option, that parking agreement lapsed. One difference between the Cinemark agreement and the one that's proposed today is that the city is retaining the right to charge a fee for parking in the structure, either on a permanent or on an intermittent basis, or for example, for events for users who are not customers or employees of Sayufi. We would have to give Sayufi Enterprises notice, but we would return the right to do that in the future. That's the primary distinction between that agreement and this agreement. The proposed parking agreement would be effective upon approval of both the city council and the redevelopment agency board. It would automatically terminate if the movie theater has not reopened for public operation by December 31st of 2017. So in other words, you know, it would take effect today, but it would automatically terminate if there isn't a movie theater operating by the end of next year. If that does occur, if they are, if there is a movie theater in operation by then, then the term of this agreement would be through September 30th, 2040, or the closure of the theater, whichever would come first. So staff is recommending approval of the parking agreement, and I will take any questions that you may have.
Any questions from Armando? For Armando? Yes, go ahead.
Armando, it has to be a movie theater only. If it becomes something else, this parking agreement is void.
Yes.
Can I have one public comment? Mr. Andrew McCullough? Come on down, sir. Says here, questions, if you have any questions of, if you're from Sayufi, representing this. So any questions for them, then just go ahead and make your statement, and then if there's questions, we'll have them done. Thank you, sir.
Actually, Mayor, I don't have any comments. My point was to be available if there were any questions for me, but otherwise, I'm happy to sit back.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead, Ron.
I have questions for staff, and I want to clarify that Sayufi Enterprises is the original recipient of redevelopment dollars back in the 70s when we financed that, or the 80s. When we financed the theater, Sayufi Enterprises was the original owner, and they were the original recipient of redevelopment funds.
Councilman Schmidt, Sayufi Enterprises was the, was one of the two private parties. Century Theaters was the other. Century Theaters was, and Mr. McCullough can correct me if I was wrong, Century Theaters was essentially owned by Sayufi Enterprises. They were a subsidiary, a separate company. That agreement was the, was a 1996 agreement that I referenced. I do not believe, Councilman Schmidt, that there was a direct financial subsidy for that theater. What the, what the city did, and really the redevelopment agency did, was they assembled the site, and they sold the site to Sayufi Enterprises. And then, again, per the terms of the agreement, we provided the parking for the theater.
So it was sold at subsidized rates?
I do not believe the, that there was a below-market rate transaction in the sale of that land, but, you know, we did, of course, do the heavy lifting as a redevelopment agency and assemble the site.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, thanks, Mr. McCullough. Appreciate it. Any more questions for staff, if not looking for motion? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the parking agreement between City of Sparks Redevelopment Agency and Sayufi Enterprises as outlined by staff.
Have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee to approve 9.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. 9.3, Consideration and Possible Approval of a Purchase Agreement, AC 5306, for a temporary construction easement and storm drain pipeline and access easement, and payment for temporary off-site parking for a total amount of $334,201 for the North Truckee Drain Phase 3 project. Go ahead, Andy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Martini, Members of the Council, for the record, Andy Hummel, Utility Manager for the city. This item represents the final easement acquisition we need for the North Truckee Drain relocation project to be able to go out with Phase 3. Asking for approval of a purchase agreement for permanent storm drain easement and access easement, temporary construction easement, and off-site parking. That's my presentation, available for any questions.
Questions? Final, final? Is it? Final, final?
This is the last one we needed.
This is it. Questions? Go ahead, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Again, I'm going to say congratulations to staff, to staff. I know there's, from the attorney's office to community development, everybody who's involved in this thing. It's been a, it's been a tough go. You know, I remember we originally, I believe, March 1st, had made a commitment to put the plans out on the street. And this has been a tough, tough road, expensive road to go in home. But congratulations to staff for getting the job done. My only, my only disheartening thing is that, you know, you won't be going to bid. I don't get to approve the contract on this job, and I just encourage you to get it on the streets. Let's get our numbers. Let's get this, this project ready to go. And, you know, as far as the council, you know, goes, remind the council, this particular flood project will be in about $60 million when we're all finished with it. It lowers the flood about eight to 12 inches average from where we're at from 97 levels. We've got a long, long ways to go, and we've got to, in our decision-making processes, do everything we can to keep that flood project on everybody's fore-fore minds and get it done. Congratulations to everybody.
Thank you. Ron Smith? You know, I'm glad this is finally done. Obviously, being on a flood project, and it's been a long time coming. We need this project. We need to tie it all together so it actually works. The question I have, Andy, is, is this a purchase agreement?
Yeah. So basically, we'll go to an escrow with this property owner to change the funds and the easement.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Good job. I'm glad this is finally done. Yeah, me, too. I hope this is a sign to two other agencies that maybe should be involved in a flood project in this Washoe County here, but haven't yet, so maybe they can get off their duff and do something about this. Not only, like Ron, I'm on the flood control project, but I lived this, the floods in this thing for, since I was, let's see, the first one would have been when I was about eight years old. And I've seen, what, six, 600-year floods? Not all of them were 100-year floods, but do the math. I'm not, nowhere near 600 years old, so. No. I may look at some, yeah, so I say, sometimes I look at, but, so I've lived this project. To me, this is, this is wonderful. I can't wait to see the end of this thing and actually have something that's going to help the flood, mitigate the flood. So thank you very much, everyone that was included. So looking for motion? Mr. Smith? Another thing I want to mention before I do make the motion, City of Sparks stepped up to the plate for this. The City of Sparks is the only entity in the three that has actually paid for part of this. We have some skin in the game. We do. Okay, I move to approve the purchase agreement and payment as outlined by staff. Have a second? I'll save it. Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve Agenda Item 9.3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All passes unanimously. Thanks, Andy. Appreciate it. Good job. 9.4, Consideration and Approval of a Tentative Map Request for a 394 Single Family Lot Subdivision Within Kylie Ranch North, Phase 6 Plan Development. Karen Melby, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and Councilwoman Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you today is a tentative map for the first one we've seen in a long time in the Kylie Ranch North. This is in Phase 6. It's for 394 lots. You'll see on the vicinity map, it's right here within the Kylie Ranch. This would be Pyramid Highway out here, and this is Sparks Boulevard. So it's east of Sparks Boulevard. This tentative map is part of the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development Phase 6 Handbook, which covers about 146 or 40, 147 acres. which covers about 146 or 40, 147 acres, and it's located at the northeast corner of the Kylie Parkway and Henry Orr Parkway. The city council approved the final handbook for Phase VI in May of 2014, and then again on August of 2016, the city council approved a second amendment to that phase, final handbook for Phase VI, which was adding 38 acres. The, this is the site plan for it. This applicant is requesting a tentative map, which consists of three villages. You can see out here, outlined in black, the three villages. The first village is 37A, and that is, the number of units is 160. Second village is 37B with 125 units. The third village is Village 43 at 109. The primary access to this property is via existing, the intersection of Kylie Parkway and Henry Orr. Here's Kylie Parkway, right here. So, the access to the subdivision will be off of these roads. These roads have been designed to handle that traffic that will be generated by this project. The Kylie Ranch North Plan Development Master Plan has been adopted as part of the Sparks Master Plan, or Comprehensive Plan soon. The subdivision proposed by this application ha, have been proposed for densities consistent with the approved master plan for the Kylie Ranch Handbook, or the Final Plan Development Handbook. This application was distributed to the municipal agencies, including Washoe County District Health and the Division of Environmental Protection. All of these letters were attached to your staff report in a packet. Condition four of the plan development, I mean, condition four of this recommending, let me bring up the tentative map. Here is the tentative map showing the lots. The developer has established, estimated the water demand for this project to be 92.4 acre feet. Water rights will be needed to serve this project, and that is one, it was condition four in the staff report. The developer also has estimated the sewage flows to be 384,150 gallons per day. Condition number five requires a sewer report. The schools to serve right now that are zoned to serve this area are Hall Elementary, Shaw Middle School, and Spanish Springs High School. The letter from the school district is also attached within the packet of agency letters. The police service will be the Sparks Police Department. RTC also submitted comment, and that letter's been attached to my staff report. The fire service will be provided by the Sparks Fire Department. At this time, this project site is located outside of the six-minute response time. The city does have an agreement with Truckee Meadows Fire Protection for Automatic Aid to serve this area, so the houses at this time are not being required to have fire sprinklers. Utility companies will be required to sign the final map verifying that there are services, they will be servicing the homes. It is anticipated the project will generate about 3,800 daily trips with PM of 398 trips. The traffic impacts from this project have been considered and reviewed by staff as part of the tentative map application. This tentative map does not change traffic patterns within the Kylie Ranch Plan Development or generate average tree, trips that were exceeding the original traffic designs for the project. The flood plain for this property is located with a Zone X, and a small portion on the eastern portion, would be over in here, is in Zone A. Based on the preliminary hydrology report submitted with the tentative map, this project will not be affected by the flood plain. The slopes are relatively flat with less than 5%, and a geotechnical report will be required prior to the issuance of any building permit, and that is represented under condition number eight. The condition number 12 on the tentative map requires that the final landscape plans be submitted with the final map, and condition number 11 requires that the architectural review, elevations for the homes be reviewed by staff. Staff is recommending, and planning commission recommends approval with 13 conditions. That concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question, Karen? It's been so long since I looked at a tentative map, sometimes I'm not sure what I'm supposed to be looking at.
Right, it's been a while.
Glad to see one come forward. Have we in the past requested sewer studies, or is that a new requirement that we're now putting on to these subdivisions? I don't remember one.
A sewer report?
Yeah, sewer, you said a sewer study.
We've always required that.
What's the diff, what are we asking for in that, in the sewer report?
Just that, that there's adequate sewer to serve the project. And capacity, huh?
Don't we provide that information?
Um.
Don't, do we know ahead of time, or what, don't, I mean, because, obviously, we're-
I think I defer to Mayor.
Beyond my time, you're going to be getting into some very serious discussions about sewers, I'm just trying to figure out the process here.
The, thank you, Councilman Schmidt. John Martini, your Community Services Director, what's different in this report that, different from, I'm sure the one that's on your mind, our citywide master sewage study that's going on right now? What we require tentative maps brings it down a few levels. This is where the developer shows us, we, we know there's capacity, Kylie's one of the original players in the development of the Northwest Interceptor, the project's been sized from, from the early 90s for that sewer line. This is where the developer shows us how each of the neighborhoods will sewer out, so the small pipes go into the big pipes. That's what we require with the tentative map.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you, sorry to-
Anyone else? Okay, looking for motion? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a great pleasure that after, I think we've been a long, long time for a tentative map in City of Sparks, I'd make a motion to approve a tentative map for Kylie Ranch North Plan Development Villages 37A, 37B, and 43, associated with PCN 16036, adopting findings 1 through 12, in fact, supporting his findings set forth in the staff report, and subject conditions of 1 through 13 listed in the staff report.
Mr. Smith? Second, motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve tentative map request for 394 single families, homes, 9.4. Any further discussion?
Good question, if you can.
Go ahead.
Did we not, used to put a bonding waiver in here that we, that we didn't have to have a bond on the tentative map?
No, that usually was with a tentative handbook.
T tentative handbook?
Yes, it's with the plan development handbooks and not with the tentative map.
I will go back to school. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passed unanimously. Thanks, Karen. 9.5 is the first reading, thanks, Mr. Erickson.
Bill number 2713, the general ordinance providing for the annexation of certain lands to the City of Sparks, lands more specifically described as accessory parcel numbers 083-011-12 and 083-011-13, a site approximately 67.4 acres in size, owned by American Recess LLC, generally located along the southwest corner of the intersection of Pyramid Lake Highway and Highland Ranch Parkway within the City of Sparks' sphere of influence, and providing other matters properly related to thereto.
This is the first reading of bill number 2713. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, October 24th. Okay, public hearings, 10.1, public hearing, consideration of possible approval of a boundary line adjustment between properties owned by the City of Sparks and the City of Sparks Redevelopment Agency for development of the Bridges Project. Go ahead, there, Speedhouse.
So, here in the new Kylie, I can't try to speed up. You can call me what you would like. Thank you, Mayor, city council? Okay. John Erickson, city engineer, for the record. The item before you is a request from the Sparks Redevelopment Agency for a boundary line adjustment to a parcel of property owned by the City of Sparks. The parcel that's owned by the City of Sparks is the parcel H-1, it's the existing parking garage. The boundary line adjustment would make adjustments to that parcel with regards to the, this Area 2 and this Area 1. Area 1 is just a sliver that would square the building up. Area 2 is going to be utilized for a fire riser and other utilities coming into the building. Under NRS 279.432, the City of Sparks is allowed to dedicate, sell, convey, or lease any of its property to a redevelopment agency. There are two quick claim deeds and one temporary easement relinquishment that will need to be recorded during this process. The first quick claim deed will release Verizon Wireless Lease Hold, Holder interest with regards to Area 1 and 2. You might be aware that Verizon has cell towers on top of the parking garage, and so we, we need to release their interest in the parcel H-1 prior to the recording of the second quick claim deed, which is the boundary line adjustment, which transfers the Sparks property to the redevelopment agency, and there is one easement coming out of the parking garage, and this is a temporary public access easement across the redevelopment parcel that will need to be relinquished. Once we're all done getting those documents recorded, we will prepare a record of survey that will reference all the aforementioned, aforementioned deeds and easements. With that, that ends my presentation, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions for John? No questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so all of the public, anyone who wants to speak to this particular project? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action. Or questions, any more questions? Okay, looking for motion? Go ahead, Ron.
I move to approve the boundary line adjustment request as outlined by staff.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee to approve agenda item 10.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passed unanimously. Thanks, John. Next would be comments from the public, we have, anyone in the public want to speak under comments from the public? Of course, seeing none, we'll move to comments from city council and city manager. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do have an announcement. The following committee appointments are available, so Sparks Parks and Recreation Department, one member, for a partial term that will end on June 30th of 2017. Persons interested in, interested in serving on this committee should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office, you may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us, click on City Services on the webpage, then click on Volunteering, Get Involved, and then click on Fill Out a City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on Monday, October 31st, 2016. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Mayberry, would you come down for a minute, please? Mr. Mayberry? We have something coming up this week called Nevada League of Cities, which City of Sparks is sponsoring. All the mayors, council people, GIDs, whatever, will be coming to the City of Sparks at the Nugget to have a conference. Mr. Mayberry's been very instrumental in helping us, Ms. Dominguez has been very instrumental in helping us, so we've got some good events that we're going to have, and we, this will be a good opportunity to showcase the City of Sparks to other elected officials in other cities that, that are very proud of their cities like we are, so. Any comments, some of the things we might be doing this, this, this week? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Adam Mayberry, for the record. You know, I sent you the, the program, so you should have that, if you have any questions or a follow-up, let me know, be happy to steer in the right direction, is a great opportunity for the city to showcase itself, particularly before your peers and mayors all across the state. Generally speaking, Tuesday or kind of, Tuesday evening, we have a opening reception at Pietro's at Victorian Square. Wednesday is a series of power classes and a golf tournament, I think some of you maybe have signed up for that. The thrust of the conference will be on Thursday and Friday with a number of educational sessions as some of you are moderating as well, and given that the legislature's in a special session, we've always had kind of a panel of legislators, but that, that will unlikely occur for this session, as a result of the special session. But we'll, we'll be around if I can answer any questions, or manager and I will be happy to do that.
Ms. Bybee?
Question, Adam, how many are we expecting in attendance, do you know, from across the state?
About 125.
125?
Yeah.
Okay, and it's all at cities and GIDs?
Townships.
Correct, large cities, towns, townships, towns, cities, GIDs, right. Now would include elected officials and, and staff.
I, I attended my first one last year with, with Adam in Mesquite. No, Wendover. Wendover, sorry, Wendover, and, and it was, it was, it was a great, great experience and great for us to network with other communities, and, and a chance for us to not only shine a spotlight on our city, but for us to also learn from others and kind of share things that are working in our different cities, you know, bigger and smaller cities alike, to really learn how, how other people are doing things. So, it's a great, great opportunity to, to build those relationships, to learn from each other, and for us really showing off the City of Sparks to maybe some of our, the people coming here who haven't spent much time here in Sparks, so thank you for your work and for Wes Henderson and the, you know, the group that's putting on the convention, it's going to be great.
The, the highlight event will be Thursday night at the Sparks Marina, 5:30, that'll be kind of the showcase event for the city to entertain and to host the folks throughout the state.
Okay, thanks, everyone, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting with a roll call. Agency members Lawson, Smith.
Here.
Martini.
Martini.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Agency Attorney, Ivey. Chief Administrative Officer, Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, do we have any public comment? Number four, agenda, do I have any changes or motion to approve?
Second.
And a second? Motion to approve by Agency Member Lawson, second by Agency Member Martini, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Five point, 5.0 minutes, do I have moved to approve? Any corrections additions? No corrections additions, moved to approve?
Second.
Moved to approve by Martini, second by Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Business items, 6.1, I have reported claims and bills for payment, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved to approve by Agency Member Lawson, second by Martini, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6.2, consideration and possible proving, approval of a parking agreement between the City of Sparks Redevelopment Agency, of the City of Sparks and Sayofi Enterprises for use of the Victorian Square parking structure adjacent to the Victorian Square Movie Theater. Mr. Ron Ellis.
This is a companion item to the one we had at the city council meeting.
It has both the city and the redevelopment agency are parties to the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'll make a move to, to approve it. Second.
Oh, okay, so we don't need the presentation, I guess because we heard it. Okay, so a move, the motion is made by Agency Member Martini, second by Smith. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll go back to item number 6.3. Okay, 6.3, consideration and possible approval of a boundary line adjustment between properties owned by the City of Sparks and Sparks Redevelopment Agency for the redevelopment of the Bridges Project. Mr. Erickson?
Adam, Chair, this is a-
And this is companion item to the previously approved during the city council meeting.
Oh, catching up.
Hey, I'm running, I'm running this one, okay?
Move, move to approve?
I'm new at this, but I am in charge, okay?
Move to approve? Second.
Move to approve, Martini, second by Lawson or Smith?
Smith.
Smith. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we are back to, okay, any more, any comments from the public? Item 7.1, seeing none. 7.2, comments from the agency or chief administrative officer? Seeing none, I've got a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Motion by Lawson, approved, second by Martini. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.